I can call the meeting in order, May 8th, 2023. Workshop agreement with Council is your order. I am Mayor Protem and I will be presiding over the workshop. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Yes, ma'am. Mayor Conley, and he has let us know that he will not be able to attend this evening.
Mm-hmm.
Mayor Protem Glover.
Here.
Councilmember Daniels.
Present.
Councilmember Blackburn.
Present.
Councilmember Smiley. Councilmember Robinson. Councilmember Bell.
Here.
All right, Mayor Protem, we have a call.
Okay, good. The vote approval of the agenda?
Mayor Protem, we have no changes to the agenda.
Okay.
Move to approve the agenda as originally proposed.
Motion made by Councilmember Smiley. Please, second.
A second.
Will, I mean, Bell.
All right, second was made by Councilmember Bell. We can see their vote in council. All those in favor?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm reading.
Trying to get ready for the next one.
Trying to get ready, okay.
All those opposed? All right, two in half, five zero.
Okay. Hang on a minute.
And then I'll just take the first item, Mayor Protem, so the first item this evening.
Madam, madam.
Lots of "M" there. The first item this evening is a presentation on a charter amendment on city council terms, and I'll turn that over to City Attorney McGirt.
Thank you, Madam Manager. Greens, Mayor Protem, and council members, I've been asked to give a brief presentation on charter amendments regarding city council terms. And this was requested by Councilmember Daniels. I'll give her credit for that. It's her request, okay. So let's start off with pop quiz. The form of government for the city of Greenville regarding terms of office for mayor and council members is found in what law? Options are federal law, North Carolina General Statute 160A, which is the main statute for cities, but now you have 160D as well, or is it the city's charter, Greenville City's charter, what do you think?
It's gotta be B. B.
I'm gonna say C based upon the name of your presentation.
C is it. But B was a good choice, but we didn't have a charter, we would have to default to be state law. So legal authority for terms of office for the mayor and council members comes from the city's charter. The charter is a body of local acts currently enforced to a particular city and any amendment. So cities are created by the General Assembly, typically passing a charter for the city. Now Greenville's charter provides that the mayor and the council members serve two-year terms, they're not staggered, and so everybody's up for election at the same time. Now there are two ways to amend the charter. Either the council would have to adopt a local act, and that means you had to go to the General Assembly, you would pass that request and give it to the Pitt County Local Delegation, and they would run that bill at the General Assembly. Or the other way to do it is adoption of a local ordinance, it's kind of a convoluted process, takes three meetings, and it could also be subject to a referendum if the voters press for a referendum. So method one, amendment of a charter by the General Assembly. So the council during an open meeting would approve the request to amend the charter, and you would have to define that request. For instance, the council may say, well, hey, we've had, we have elections for two years for the mayor and the council, everybody's up at the same time, we want to change that to four-year terms, and we want them to be staggered, so you'll have half of the council members up during different cycles, so everybody won't be up for election at the same time. So you have to define the request, you have to present that request, you have to approve it, you have to submit that request to the Pitt County Local Delegation, which are the two representatives here in Pitt County, and also your state senator here in Pitt County to run the bill. And the local delegation would seek to have the charter provision adopted, and it would have to pass both chambers to become law. So that's the first method. The second method is state law allows certain modifications to the charter by ordinance, and it's set forth in General Statute 160A-101. Any change to the city charter affecting election of city officers has to be finally adopted and approved at least 90 days before the election. And this could actually happen in like three consecutive meetings. Council would have to adopt a resolution of intent to amend the charter, then you would have to, the city would have to publish notice of a public hearing, you'd have to hold a public hearing at your second meeting within 45 days of that resolution. After that public hearing is held, you'd have to publish notice within 10 days of the council hearing to adopt an ordinance. And if you adopt that ordinance, it would become law. Now you could also make that ordinance subject to a referendum of the voters. Or the voters, at that last bullet point, the voters could request a referendum. After that ordinance is adopted by council, we have to publish notice in the paper, and within 30 days, the public could say, hey, we want to have a referendum on this change to the charter.
How many statements would be required?
That's a good question. It would have to take 5,000 signatures, or 10% of the registered voters, whichever is less. So in terms of term limits for the 20 largest cities in North Carolina, and I think Greenville, we fall like around number 12. In terms of cities where mayors have four-year terms, eight of the 20 largest cities in the state, the mayor has a four-year term. In 12 of the larger cities, and we fall there, Greenville, the mayor has a two-year term. Regarding council members, in terms of cities with four-year terms, 13 of the 20 largest cities have four-year terms, and two-year terms for the other seven cities, and the city of Greenville will fall within the seven cities regarding council terms, which are two years. In terms of, if you wanted to run a bill like this at the General Assembly, Bethel did this in 2020, and they just had flat terms, four years, everybody's up at the same time, and that was passed in 2020. I think the board of, the director of the Board of Elections said they're not gonna have an election this coming year because of this change. Aiden, they obtained a local act in 2013 where they have four-year staggered terms, so every two years, half of the councils up in Aiden. So again, I hope I delivered, I promised on a short presentation. Wanted to shout out to Ms. Alexander for helping with this presentation, and here to answer any questions.
I don't have a question, I'm sorry. I don't have a question, but I'd like to thank you for putting this presentation together. Excuse me, as you stated, it was a request that I felt would be beneficial economically for the city of Greenville, and then having our surrounding cities, not just Aiden and Bethel, but Wentzville, Kenton, all those cities are four-year terms. And so staggered is something that I would like to see. And again, just thank you for putting that presentation together.
Thank you. And one other thing about staggered terms is a kind of convoluted way that this works, but if you do staggered terms, one group of the council members are just gonna have a two-year term for the first year of the election, and the other group would have a four-year election, and after that, it would run four years, just a little chart there. But you can't make them stagger without somebody being punished a little bit.
And just for that record.
Yeah, yeah, well, at least somebody would have a shorter term than the other council members, and that decision would have to be made, so.
And so, and we're not looking for this to happen for this November, this term.
It'd be pretty tight if y'all, well, y'all, as long as the decision.
But I want that clear.
Exactly. Remember, here, Ms. Councilmember Daniels said she's not asking for this for 2023.
Yes, thank you.
Just to be clear, do you think a longer term is a benefit?
I have no recommendation.
No, you say, once somebody gets punished, and you're saying, give him the guy the two-year term is a punishment.
I got you, I got you.
And take it, yeah. I got you, I got you.
Okay, well, thank you so much.
Are there, there are cities that don't stagger, everybody?
Right, yes, I guess, yeah, and I can, I have a chart.
Bethel for four years.
Yeah.
Was it Bethel, Aiden, I'm sorry.
Bethel has a solid chance. I have a chart too that shows that four-year.
On Charlotte, everybody runs at the same time, exactly. So, Ealing, they're only two-year terms, still on. They are, however, I think that it has been a subject of much discussion in Charlotte about conversion and converting.
Yeah, Charlotte, they're probably two-year.
So, is that a choice that the council can choose?
I think it's the council's.
Four years, or?
That's what he was talking about, we would have to, we can either have three or four meetings about it ourselves, or we can have the state, we can ask the General Assembly to make a change. There's two ways to do that.
If you all do it by ordinance, it's definitely your choice, if you take it to the General Assembly, the General Assembly has power over the city, so they may take your choice, and they may follow your choice, or they could change your choice.
See, I wonder whether we pass this next election and put this in place? Because that's, that would put us, what, three years out from this change?
Two, maybe?
Two and a half, yeah. Some of these might not be here at that point. If there's interest in doing it, might be smart.
Well, and I think too, we don't want to give the assumption that we're doing it for ourselves, and assuming that we, you know, we just, I think it's wise for even future councils as we go forward.
Yeah, well, I think, I guess what I'm getting at is, we know for certain there will be at least one new council member next time with.
Correct.
Retiring, we'll call it. We're taking a sabbatical.
Stating.
But so, you know, if the intent of this, like we've talked about, is to, you know, make it so that new council members have more time to get adjusted and learn before they have to run again, and it would make sense in my mind to go ahead and move this thing along and get going, because, you know, the first year almost, you're doing orientations, learning facilities, learning about the budget processes, a lot of change that takes place, and a lot of learning that takes place, so in my mind, if we know for sure we've got at least one new member coming on, it might be smart to go ahead and enact this, but.
But, and I. Go ahead. I'll see when you're ready.
And another thing too, running, like you do every two years, that's a lot of work. I mean, for us, now, I don't mind running, but it is a lot of work, and it requires a lot of your supporters that, you know, helped you during the election. Here they go, they're running every two years, and maybe even put it at four. I think if we're gonna go for it, we need to go for it as stat, because not as a four, or not as a two-year term, but for the four, because we may be rejected anyway, and we have to go back and do something different. I think that we need to try, because running an election every two years, and even if it's gonna be staggered, it's still gonna be, you gotta run an election every, you're running for election all the time, and then you may get someone on that space on the council in only two years, so, and not finish the four. You may get somebody to quit, you know, I've been here a long time, I see a lot of things happen. But, you know, that's, that's my opinion, because I think that if you're gonna go for it, I'd like to know what Charlotte is doing, City Manager. We can find that out.
It's not understanding that they have two-year terms, where there's been discussion there.
Yeah, I talked to.
There hasn't been any movement.
I talked to Councilmember Mitchell at the meeting, at the lead meeting, and he was telling me that, that they wanted it to go four, because the same reason I said, you run it, it's okay for everybody to run at the same time, but it's even harder if you come on and do two years, and then you can't run another year. You understand what I'm saying?
So you're saying you don't want this to stagger?
I don't think staggering is a good thing. I don't think that's a good thing. I think that it really keeps the manager and everybody trying to learn new people, and everybody's different, everybody's got mine of their own, and it just keeps the manager and other staff members working really hard, trying to keep things going. Okay, that's it. All right? Yes.
First of all, I actually strongly agree with Councilmember Glover about not staggering, whatever we do, and I just want to say thank you to Councilmember Daniels for bringing this forward, and to everyone for sharing your responses. I spent a lot of time thinking about this and looking into this, and call me a policy wonk, all you NPA folks will know what I'm talking about, but I went back to the Federalist Papers on this one, because this is a really important issue in government, elections, how often, staggered, what kind of terms, and so I'm not always a fan of James Madison, but I think he really summed up how I feel about this. He says, it was in Federalist Number 52, he says, "It is essential to liberty that the government in general should have a common interest with the people, so it is particularly essential that the branch, under consideration, should have an immediate dependence on and an intimate sympathy with the people. Frequent elections therefore are key to this intimate sympathy." And he goes on to talk about that, but he concludes by saying that the liberties of the people can never be in danger from biennial elections, and that is really where I come down. As much as I agree with Councilmember Glover that elections take a lot of energy, and we ask a lot of our supporters to come out, I believe to my core that frequent elections are important for our local government. I also believe that the ability to completely change the council by not having staggered terms is also important. I believe that ultimately, we work for the people of Greenville, and to, the way I see that, since we work for the people of Greenville, we need to go to them frequently, and we need to go to them in our entirety. So that's, that's where I fall on this. I would, I would support keeping our two-year terms as they are, and not having any elections staggered.
Yeah, my last comment is, to the extent the council wants to do this soon, there's deadlines to submit a legislation to the General Assembly, you're talking about state and obvious, I'm not sure if there's even time to go the General Assembly route. Remember, as the chart said, it's a statute, that's second bullet point, the ordinance has to go into effect at least 90 days before the election, so you got a tightness there as well, so I just wanted to extend, somebody who wants to jump on this, it may be difficult, so.
Should we decide to move forward? Would you prefer hearing from the people or going to legislation? Are we going to the House?
As much as I respect everybody who does support this, I would not be able to support it under either of the avenues.
Okay.
I think her question was more if it seems it's gonna move forward, which way, right? Which way, which way would you run this in?
At that point, I would say it would be the will of the council.
Well, with all due respect to the Federalist, he was writing about, 200 years ago, about federal elections for people who lived, like, you know, many days' ride from their hometown. I think people who live right next to their neighbors probably are pretty, probably insulated from Mr. Madison's concerns. The, but the biggest, in my opinion, it's not about what's convenient for members of council, right? It's about what's in the best interest of the citizens. The challenge is, is that campaigns are all about what you disagree about, right? It makes no, there's little point in standing up next to your opponent and saying, we agree on everything, right? Even if you agree on almost everything, you still have to talk about the things you disagree about, otherwise, there's no decision to be made. Government's about figuring out the things you do agree about. So the biggest advantage to this would be that you, you would extend the length of time where you're talking about what you agree on, and you'd minimizing, you'd minimize to some extent the percentage of time you're focused on your disagreements, because I think all of us around the table know, it's almost impossible to govern on something if I disagree about, right? Unless we want to pass something, we all have to find some way of moving forward that we generally speaking agree on. Elections are, you know, not periods of time where you do that. So the best argument for this, you know, is that it would be in the citizen's interest, not in a member of council's interest. And the reason would be, was that the citizens would get more time during which their leaders were focused on, you know, finding areas of consensus and agreement that were in the citizen's best interest, and less time fighting amongst each other, you know, in order to get their jobs back. I say that as somebody who's already said, I'm not planning on running again, so it's, this is not about, you know, me getting a longer term, and where this is, and I've said this many times in many forums, I really think that a longer term would be advantageous to the government of the city.
At that point, we have a real question of how to hold the council accountable. With two-year terms, and with the council coming up in its entirety, again, regardless of your dismissing or minimizing Mr. Madison's concerns, I believe what he said is true, this frequent having to go to the people, and yes, things you disagree on, that's how you make policy, you don't make policy by like-minded people sitting in a room, you make policy by getting out amongst the public, and deter of debate and discussion with all its sharp edges, that's how you get good public policy. That's moot.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're looking for directions, Mr. Attorney?
No.
Okay.
So our next item, Mayor Protem and Council, is an update from Mr. Phillips regarding various revisions to the city code.
So talking a little bit about the revisions to city code, we're gonna be talking about some various revisions to city code. First, we have to talk a little bit about the old law, the way things were done before we're getting ready to talk about Senate Bill 300. Under the old law, there was the general rule that unless council provided otherwise, a violation of a city ordinance is a class three misdemeanor by default, under, or an infraction under North Carolina General Statute 14-4. So the two statutes that issued that address that are 160A-175 and 14-4, enforcement of ordinances and violation of local ordinances misdemeanor. So it says new current law, but this took place in 2021, so the Senate Bill, or session law, 2021-138, more commonly known and referred to as Senate Bill 300, but it made changes to North Carolina General Statute 175 and 14-4 to completely decriminalize all ordinances in the state of North Carolina under certain circumstances, and creating a new general rule. So the new general rule, the new default rule is as follows, except for the types of ordinances listed in 160A-175B1, which we'll talk about that in just a second. A violation of a city ordinance may be a misdemeanor or infraction as provided by 14-4, only if the city specifies such in the ordinance. So under that same Senate Bill 300, there were some stipulations to that. Number one, it required if the city council or governing body was going to add a criminal sanction, it would have to have two readings, and then number two, it listed out, that was that B1 section that I said to look out for in just a second. It specified 10 types of ordinances that may not be imposed a criminal penalty, have no imposition of a criminal penalty, and those are listed there, local planning and development regulation, except those related to unsafe buildings, stream clearing programs, regulating and licensing businesses and trades, outdoor advertising, solar collectors, cisterns and rain barrels, building setback lines, curb cut regulations, and trees. None of those can have criminal penalties under Senate Bill 300. So corrective action was needed by the city of Greenville, just like every other city in the state of North Carolina and counties. Number one, to remove criminal penalties from ordinances that can no longer be enforced criminally. Number two, to identify those specific ordinances in which a criminal penalty is requested, and applying criminal penalties to those specific section. So I call this kind of ordinance surgery, if you will, but we had to go back and look at our ordinances to address this. Now, one of the things that Senate Bill 300 did not change was this section of 160A-175 that said that a city shall have the power to impose fines and penalties for violation of its ordinances, and may secure injunctions and abatement orders to further ensure compliance with its ordinances as provided in the section. So that part did not change. So, again, we're talking a little bit about this ordinance surgery to address those two issues, but while we are there and we have the ordinance patient on the table, we're gonna be looking at five different things here to address. Number one, to bring the city code provisions into better compliance. Number two, to standardize both criminal and civil penalties under our code. Number three, to address appeal provisions. Number four, to clean up certain ordinances, in other words, reword certain ordinances, move some to certain chapters, in other words, think of this as different books, this book belongs on a different shelf, that type of thing. Number five, repeal those preempted or otherwise not needed. So some of the ordinances, as you can well imagine, haven't been updated in quite a while, so we tried to look at that. So number one, bringing city code provisions into better compliance. You've already done some of that already by looking. You've already done some of that already by looking at, for example, Part II Title 12, the animal ordinance. We did that, what, last year, year before last? So that has been done already. Number two, revision of Part 10 Title, Part II Title 10, Chapter 2, where, and that proposed revision is in your packet, that is completely repealing and rewriting Chapter 2 of Title 10 to better address traffic parking regulations as proposed. Number three, or number two, to standardize both criminal and civil penalties. Some examples that you'll see, and we had this in the animal provision as well, for those criminal penalties, make those a class three misdemeanor and criminal penalty of not less than $100 and not more than $500. But civil penalty, first violation, $100 ticket, second violation, $250, and then third violation, $500, to kind of standardize that throughout the code. Number three, to address appeal provisions. There is a default appeal provision in Title 1, Chapter 1, Section 20, and it basically says for any appeal that's not specifically addressed in the ordinance, that is the default appeal for any civil penalties. So one of the things that we are looking at is updating that language. We're also looking at, you know, you had enacted a rewrite of City Code 12-2-6, that's in the proposal also, that's talking about the appeal board with the animals. Under the animal ordinance, we're trying to look at, you know, the veterinarian issue, and so we're looking at revising that to make sure that we have a robust appeal board that we can actually seat and hear these appeals. Number two, a revision of Title 10. Again, that is a complete rewrite and to add an appeal board to that as well. And then, number three, to refer to default appeal procedure under that 1120 process, which we talked about just a second ago. Number four, to clean up ordinances or to reword, move, reword, move or move to other chapters. So, for example, we're talking a little bit about the appeal board, and so this is the proposed language for the appeal board, that it would, instead of what it currently says, then to say, "The appeal board shall be constituted of three city employees who shall be authorized to hear and decide appeals in accordance with this section. One member shall be the chief of police or designee from the police department. The remaining two members shall be either the city manager and a designee, or two designees selected by the city manager. There should be, shall be an alternate member selected by the city manager to serve on the appeal board in the event of a conflict, and the APS supervisor may not serve on the appeal board." So again, the APS supervisor would be the one actually making the decisions appealed, so they would not, he or she would not be able to serve on the board.
Can I ask a question about this?
Sure.
Not to get too much in the weeds on this. This hasn't been, hasn't come to us yet, has it?
It is a, the language is proposed in a draft form at this stage. It has not gone to the governing, you know, to you for adoption yet.
Because having worked on those animal protective services ordinances even before our downtown council, one of the things that was nice about the appeal board is that it did have that outside community member. And again, I know that's not the topic of our discussion today. It concerns me a bit if it would be like three members of the city staff. I think, I think that's something that I hope we'll look at maybe more closely. And I know we looked for a vet and couldn't seat a vet on that appeal board, so I know that's an issue. But when that does come before us, maybe we can talk more about it then.
Sounds good. All right. Number two, to move and reword current 12-1-8. So for example, motorized vehicles on the greenways, that's actually found in Title 12 as opposed to Title 10, which would be transportation and traffic. So it seems like the better fit to put that book on the shelf would be to move it over to Title 10, so that's what we're looking to do there as a proposal. Number five is to repeal those ordinances that are preempted or otherwise not needed. So for example, that we have ordinance regulating bicycle helmets, it's already preempted by state law, and so it's not needed in our city code. Likewise, as an example, under Title 6, which is the Public Works, it gives the power of arrest to the Public Works Director, so we're actually asking that that would be repealed also under that.
Neither of the rest people.
So the next steps.
They can roll back your garbage can. You're under a citizen's arrest.
Next steps, the proposed ordinance revisions will need to come back to city council, and you have a draft in front of you of what is proposed currently.
Is anybody have questions for Mr. Phillips?
I do. So just looking at this from the 30,000-foot view, it sounds like the General Assembly went through and just wholesale said, "No more, you cannot criminalize unless you go through specifically." And furthermore, there's some things that you can't criminalize at all.
That's correct. Yes.
So we're going back and having to redo and add criminal penalties where we think is appropriate, but otherwise, they've all been removed?
Well, they've been removed, but the ordinances, some of those ordinances still say it shall be a criminal penalty. So you, for those that you can't have a criminal penalty, you've actually got to go back, take that language out. And while we're at it, if we are going to recriminalize those, we need to add that back in and then standardize it.
So it sounds like there's only 10 areas where we cannot have criminal penalties, and they look pretty innocuous. Although I will say, if somebody goes through and mutilates and devastates multiple trees in our city, would they not face, chief, some kind of criminal penalty at some point?
They may face a criminal penalty that's otherwise captured in, for example, the North Carolina General Statutes. So there may be some criminal penalties in Chapter 14 of the North Carolina General Statutes, and there may be some civil provisions and civil penalties that council can look at as far as application for that for trees, to increase civil penalties for that as well.
I'm just thinking, there are criminal acts that could take place involving trees.
That's correct.
Devastating vandalism of our heritage trees. Excuse me, so, but other than those, then, I'm just, I'm just, I guess, trying to get my head around what we're doing here. We're going back, we're adding criminal penalties where we can. Do you see this as, is it, are we at risk of not having the kind of enforcement ability we need with our ordinances because of House Bill or Senate Bill or Bill 300? In other words, these changes, have they reduced our ability to enforce our own laws?
I don't believe so. I mean, I think this is something that we are addressing, and we're trying to be very thoughtful and thorough in the process. And so I think, you know, staff has looked at that, and I think we're trying to get to the point that we have this corrected in the best way.
So even though criminal penalties were sort of wholesale removed, we're able to go back, to use your surgery reference from earlier, we're able to sort of surgically, where we believe criminal penalties are needed, we can reinsert them. We just have to do it one ordinance at a time.
That's right. And you've done that in some of your ordinances already that you passed. For example, with the animals, also discharging a weapon in the city, that was one of the early ones that was done a year or so ago.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
The third item on tonight's workshop agenda is a review of the Towne Common Bulkhead and Esplanade replacement and the conceptual design. I'm going to turn it over to Mark Noddyham, who will introduce our guests.
Sure. Thank you. Good afternoon, everybody. So this presentation is going to showcase two designs developed for the Towne Common Bulkhead replacement. We're here today because of a structural assessment done on the bulkhead last year. It really showed the need for this project. This is task order number one, that developed these design concepts. And at the conclusion of the presentation, we'll ask for council's direction on a preferred design concept. So I'm going to turn it over to Mark Corello. He's with Moffett Nickel on the design team, and Chairman Ru is also here from the East Group, the one who designs.
Thank you, Mark.
Good afternoon, everyone. Mayor Potem, councilmembers. As Mark said, we're here today really to have an opportunity to talk about this opportunity to really reimagine resilience along Towne Common. You know, we have a shoreline edge that is done over its 55-plus years, a way of protecting the park and the infrastructure from the effects of the Tar River during various flooding events. But with that opportunity, it's also become a kind of a boundary line with the water and how people approach the water. And so we want to talk about how we can kind of balance both efforts, still protect the park during flooding events, but at the same time improving access to the water. So each of these concepts takes a variation on how that can be approached. So just a little bit of, kind of step back from what we were talking about in terms of the condition of the bulkhead. The bulkhead was built in 1967, and so we're over 55-plus years now, and it's slowly been deteriorating over the last good 20, 25 years. Moffett Nickel did a inspection back in May 2004, and then we followed it up last year in 2022. And what we're seeing basically is a degradation of the steel. You know, the steel corrodes in water over periods of time, and we're just losing that thickness of steel. So what we're seeing now is that the service life of the bulkhead is coming to its end. And so what that means to that is that if you continue to, if this remains as a structure, the repair costs are continuing to be escalated higher and higher, such that you get to the point where replacement is more economical than you are just repairing it over an extended period of time.
Which one of y'all climbed that ladder?
I did not, so I will tell you that. But just to give you a good reference and a good point, that is general water, that is 15 feet. So the variation with the bulkhead, from the top of bulkhead down to water, depending on where we are, is between 15 and 20 feet. So it is a significant distance between the water. So when we talk about access, now you have a sense of how far you may be from the water. So the objectives, as we were talking about, again, we want to maintain flood protection. We want to improve access to the water. Those are two critical things that we wanted to do. But we also want to take this opportunity to look at how we can enhance the experience along that edge, and then also create other opportunities for circulation and pathways within the near-shore edge of that. So we'll talk about that a little bit. We always want to look about how we can minimize construction costs. And so our objectives in looking at these alternatives, take that into consideration. Environmental enhancements, we want something that is also something, an edge that can react to water, can be resilient, but it also provides some type of habitat enhancement. So that's a key here. And of course, from a city perspective, we always want something that is, minimizes maintenance, and especially during a post-flood cleanup event. And so those were also our key elements in our thought process.
Maybe you mentioned this, but is there some design, out of design consideration that, look, if we ever have to do something with this thing, it's not, like, not monumental, right? I think one of the challenges here is that what's created kind of the problem along the way is there's nothing to be done unless you, like, bite off the whole chunk, right? And I was, what if we put it back, you know, seemingly could be something that was a little more modular or granular, or could be addressed, you know, in smaller pieces? I don't know if that's a possibility. I'm just saying, is that something that's figured into your thought process?
Sure. I mean, I think a piece of it, there's implementation, so there's phasing, right? How best to phase it from a budgetary, because it is a quarter mile worth of shoreline, so it is a fairly large piece of element. And then, you know, in the future, how to build those elements in such that you could kind of mix and match or play again. We'll talk a little bit about that. You know, we're kind of balancing longevity of materials and design, because what we placed in, we want to have a design that is equivalent to where it was. So we want, our goal is 50-plus years. And so, just like this bulkhead is, you know, at age 55, so it met its 50-plus-year design life as well. And so when we look at that balance.
At the end of that design life, it'd be nice if it wasn't, you know, something that it all's kind of, you know, that all either fails at once or has to be replaced at once, right?
No, I think, and we'll kind of craft in one of the alternatives how we've looked at different shoreline types and how that can work to that question. So the first one I want to, maybe in a more general term, is what we call replacement in kind. So this is, you know, you have a bulkhead there today, this is replacing it, but with an understanding that we still want to include some of those access elements into the system. So there's posters in the back as well, so if you have opportunities after the workshop and then before your general meeting, to take a look at them. But just kind of reflective right here, the blue outline generally is the area we're working within right now, and so obviously there's some pieces where the rendering is kind of melded in, but this, our general area is really this outline. But starting from Green Street and walking down, you can see the bulkhead is generally in the same alignment. It's hard to see, but it's a black line, but it more or less is where it is today. It's out in front. We don't, we don't take out the old bulkhead, we put a new one in front. A fairly standard regulatory process, so it's not something that's challenging to do, and it's less expensive than trying to rip out the bulkhead, which means you have to dig everything out from behind it and then put a new one in. So that's a challenge. So the more straightforward process, put it in front by a couple inches, and then that creates that seamless transition. But walking from Green Street heading to the east, you know, we've tried to preserve a lot of the tree canopy that makes the west side special. We tried to integrate a path into that, into that. And then, as you kind of walk out, we do have an overlook area opportunity that's over the bulkhead. So again, we're trying to create this access and a little bit better feeling of being on the water, so something that we don't see today. And then, as you progress further down to the east, again, the esplanade is a key feature that's been with the park for a long time, and so we wanted to maintain that esplanade, that, you know, right against the water where you can look down and see it. So that is still there today, but we've also created a secondary circular path and circulation for those that want to come, kind of come in and out of that esplanade feature, but also enjoy the amenities of the park. There's a little bit better connection. If you're down there today, you know there's a little retaining wall between the esplanade and the park that is hard to make the jump up. So again, we're trying to look at ways to, again, create that interaction. We also see opportunities, and I think if I don't do this right here, if this was a red button or not, also opportunities in the middle of the park to create some seating areas that are against the water, again, trying to create that interface as we move, as we progress. As you go further east from the amphitheater as it sits today, it's very similar to what we see today. Some of that is because the amphitheater is fairly close to the bulkhead, so we don't have a lot of opportunity to start putting changes into the design. But as we finally get to the east side of it, this is where we see getting the same alignment, but then working in at the far east side, a way of getting down to the water. And so here is a mixture of a kind of a, I'll call it a back-and-forth zigzag walkway why we do that, because we have accessibility requirements, so we'll make sure everyone has the opportunity to get to the water as we come down in elevation. So you kind of see that meander. But there, we integrate in a little bit, and I'll show you here, maybe in the next couple of sections, we start to integrate some steps and some stairs. This is a little bit further in the middle of the park, where we're talking about some of the terrace seating. Again, the bulkhead is over the new one, you can see it's in front of the old one. We have a little step off now where the railing is, so you're not, right at the edge of the rail, the bulkhead's a little bit in front of that now. And then you have this transition where you have some terracing, and then, of course, then there's opportunities for some environmental enhancements with rain gardens and some other stormwater improvements that may get integrated in. And then, this gives you a real sense of, you know, we do have a floating dock, you would do want to get that public from the water embracing, and so from people coming in the water, you have kayakers, you've got little john boats, or someone else using the river, that they can come in and access the park from the water. Right now, that's a challenge unless you're on the far east side at the boat ramp. And so we try to integrate that into the process. And then here is Section 3, which is right adjacent to the boat. This is what we're talking about. We still have a long bulkhead, but then we try to integrate a little bit of stair stepping right at the end. And this is where you kind of walk down that corner edge, and then you walk into this terrace seating area. So you're right at that, at the bend. So this is our first concept in saying, this is replacement in kind, but we're still giving you an opportunity to get to the water.
Before you go to that next concept, how many feet, how many feet is that floating dock?
That floating dock is more or less, probably, give or take, about 100 to 120 feet, something like that.
About 150 feet.
Yeah. It depends. That's not final list. But our goal is, you know, five to six, up to maybe 10 boats, depending on sizing.
And would that design only allow docking on the outside?
Yeah. As it currently sits, yeah, we would have the anchoring system on the bulkhead side and then have that thing. Again, we're also looking at how debris management moves and trying not to create areas of pockets and capture. So that was our idea, to keep it closer to the bulkhead. And then maybe some other debris, if this option goes, and this location goes forward, then there's probably some other debris management options we'll want to take into consideration to deflect some of that, so it doesn't hit the dock.
In this slide, where you've got the people out, I guess, on the far end of the bulkhead?
Sure.
So that's a locked-in position. That doesn't rise and go, so how far is that up off the river?
Yeah. So the idea is, we step it in fashion, so the lowest one is roughly around, and this will get, obviously, if this is an option, gets fine-tuned with the frequency of flooding and how often, but it's roughly around plus 5 to plus 6 above the river. of flooding and how often, but it's roughly around plus five to plus six above the river, so you're about five feet off.
Against the high-water mark?
What's that?
Against the high-water-
No, against the high-water, so you're asking, will this get flooded?
That's what I'm looking at. You know where the capture area for lumps and debris and stuff, when the water comes back down, you're going to wind up cleaning that stuff up if it's not so high.
Correct, so you're at a higher position here, this is your standard position, as it stands today, and then this area at the end, yeah, you will see some inundation. And so we design it such that it can take that inundation and then have minor cleanup, because again, that's our opportunity to try to get down to the water.
So the docks that are floating, you just have a dock where you can come and dock and step out of your boat or whatever, but not access to the upper level?
No, it does. So, I wish I had a pointer here, maybe I don't understand how it works, but there's a gangway from that dock to this terraced area at the lower end, and then from there you walk up to that zigzag, basically, into the parking lot as it stands.
So this would be the far east end of the-
This is really centralized to the far east end of the park. Correct.
Thank you.
So I'll call concept B a little bit different, that was replacement in kind A. This one's called B is embracing the river, so we take a little bit more opportunity to work access to it. And so similarities from, I'll say, the red line number one to the west as it is in concept A, so they're both the same, there is a bulkhead in kind replacement from, you know, from Green Street down to the middle of the park. Again, same opportunities to improve access along that corridor, and seating areas and circulation paths and esplanade, all that stays the same as it is today. What we see, the real change is coming to the east of the esplanade. So here's where we take in an opportunity to really start to cut back the bulkhead. So now this is where we're doing a system where we have much lower bulkhead, and now we're looking at sloped and terrace systems moving forward this way. So similar to maybe a little bit of the east, where we saw at the end of concept day, but enlarging that opportunity, bringing some environmental enhancements and some vegetative areas, again, trying to maybe get a little less structure, hardened surfaces that it is today, but still providing access through the process. So I'll walk through the sections here, and I've gone concept A on the top, so you can kind of get, they're very similar sections and locations. So you can see section A, you're up at, you know, you're at plus 15, plus 16, and then there's that floating dock down at water level, and so you can see that elevation difference. And so with concept B, we have a bulkhead still, a little bit higher elevation, around plus eight or so, with a timber boardwalk that gets you right out to the edge, the floating dock is still riverward of that. And then we have that terrace seating again, and then an opportunity of a connector and boardwalk between different sections a little bit higher up, and then of course, then back up to the most elevated level, which is where the park is today. So we're getting in a transition as we go, again, incorporating different environments, all accessible, and so that's the key here, again, allowing people to experience, obviously, there's different river levels, it doesn't also preclude access to those, that near water, because we're adjusting for different heights. Again, everything designed such that it's maintained during inundation periods, and so that's a key, again. We don't want, one of the key things we mentioned is trying to minimize maintenance, still balancing that access. Again, concept five, again, moving a little bit further east, and so you can see, we're talking about on A, where we were right at the far end by the parking lot, where we had that kind of step-down right at that localized location. B takes it a little bit further, cuts back the bulkhead more, we have some vegetative stabilization and environment. We have a boardwalk that's elevated again, again, trying to walk this way, meander its way through that vegetation, and again, educational opportunities that come with that. And then at the end, we have a upland retaining wall, again, still providing the overall protection to the park infrastructure as it stands today, just a different way of imagining and envisioning that access to the water and providing those educational and different environments in which to learn for citizens and visitors alike. And so this is kind of a thought process, this is concept B at the end, so maybe in rendering perspective gives it a little bit easier understanding, and thanks to Sharon on this, but you really get a sense of how all this works. There's the floating dock, there's the gangway, I think someone asked earlier. So you can see how that comes down to the dock, and how that comes back up, and then we have this meandering accessible path that moves in there, terrace seating, vegetation transitions, of course, there's always stairs for those that want to use them, and then the upper tier of the park as it stands today is still maintained. So again, all opportunities for, between A and B, one, B is a little bit more aggressive in trying to create that different environment. Just understanding, we did do a public outreach, the city was very proactive in this, you can see the posters in the background, we had some presentation boards as well, brochures, and we did have a project webpage as well. Couple of summaries outreach events, last month, we had a meeting with the Parks and Recs Committee, and their input, we also had a virtual stakeholders' meeting, that was with those users of the park today, get their input into the changes that may be. And then we were also trying to have an opportunity, when they had the concerts in the common, but as everyone knows, the weather was fortunate for that and it didn't work out. But we did take an online public survey that was up for 30 days. We were fortunate to get good participation, 440 participants. We asked them two questions, tried to keep it focused into what we were looking at. First question, which of the two you liked, the kind of replacement in kind, or the one that is embracing the water? And as you can see, zoomed up, it's 77% really enjoyed concept B, they like that ability to get to the water and have those water-related things. It's really looking at it from, if you take a perspective, one of the comments was, where the town's done, the city's done a great job of really enhancing how people look to the park inwards, those from the water looking this way. So this is an opportunity to really have that vision, where people come up the river and they can really access it and see it, and it gives you some programming events, concerts in the park on water, something different that you may not have programmed in the past. And then kind of the things, what features people like the most? And not surprisingly, walkways to water and terrace seating near the water were the popularities, and again, kind of focusing back on concept B. So it was a good engagement process, we enjoyed the feedback, it helped to funnel some of these and focus our vision as we went forward here.
Could you hold for one second?
Sure.
Those green bars don't have anything next to them, what are those two?
Yeah, you mean that 53%?
Yeah, and the 40%.
Yeah, that's a good question. I think we might have one extra, one or thing in there, I'll follow up on and see what that, the key was, but the 75% and the 70% were the two that were associated with the terrace seating and the walkways. So, but it's a good question, I'll follow.
And then I did the survey on my phone, seeing the renderings here on a 100-inch screen or whatever it is, shows things a lot better. Do we have any breakdown on what percentage of folks completed the survey on a mobile device versus maybe a laptop or a desktop, where they would have gotten a better picture of what we were discussing?
A good question, but I'll follow up on that question. I don't have that in front of me right now.
Okay, and was concept B 150-foot dock as well?
Yeah, both of them have the same water access, boating access per se, and I think there's, you know, we talk about it down there, the city has opportunities to look at, grant opportunities for that boating dock, because it is a transient facility, so something to be considered.
Okay, thank you.
It's great participation, too, in that.
Yeah, we were really pleased with, and, you know, all the workshop meetings, the stakeholder meeting, everything was really good, it was very helpful.
Any projects you've done that have, similar to this, that we can give a look at?
That are not, and ready to start designing and construction? Yeah, I'm trying to think of, that is a park that is in close proximity to the city, that's completed recently, probably nothing in close proximity, I could give you some examples.
Well, give me some examples, even if it's not close, we can get an idea of what some of this stuff might look like.
Yeah, so I think if you, a couple of projects I worked on in bulkhead, there's a good one where we did a park in downtown Tampa on the river, same concept, same thought, was join Belen Park, same thought process there, where we had some terracing and some seating. If you want to look at some other topics with just terracing and some of that zigzag path, you can look at Georgetown Park up in Washington DC.
That was going to be mine, that's somewhere in there. Alexandria, not there.
Yeah, well, we're working on in Alexandria right now, as we regress on something similar to that, that's in the process.
We'll work and get a couple of ideas and share it with the council, and then some other locations. We're happy to share that. And the idea of not mobile, I heard mobile versus computer, and there was one more, and then the two green bars.
Of the difference between option A and option B is, your opinion is a cost here? It's clearly-
Surprisingly-
Because presumably, you can make, you know, we could do option B, you know, the changes in option B on the downstream side of the park could be applied to the upstream side of the park if you have enough budget for it, right? I mean, there's no-
So a couple of things I haven't touched on, so there's a couple of physical constraints in the park, there is a sanitary sewer line, so obviously, for preservation, on the west side, obviously, that could be-
I'm sorry, there's a what?
Sanitary sewer line, trunk line, sewer line. So, yeah, that could change, or that could be an infrastructure, another infrastructure project that the city could embark to move that, and so that would give you that flexibility. There's also tree canopies, you know, there's always a balance of what you're going to remove, which is there as preservation, and there is a fair amount of cypress and other trees on that western corridor, so, you know, when we looked at it, we were trying to make some preservation thought processes there and not just wholeheartedly rip everything out. But to answer your question, they both cost about the same.
Oh, really?
Yeah, so, because the steel costs, obviously, with less steel, less weight, less cost, so B having less bulkhead is kind of that offsetting, meaning that we're doing terracing and other elements.
When you're presented with the design, were you aware that that part, that end of the park, the very far, the downstream end, the east end, is basically the only part of the park that was purchased at market? So, I mean, we bought, we literally bought that part, that end of the park from a willing seller, right? And there was no condemnation, agreement, or anything on those lines, so we have a lot more flexibility about what we do there. Was that part at all, were you familiar with those arrangements?
I wasn't, but I think as the design team looked at it, I mean, the elevations worked better there, too, and the transitions worked better just because of the parking lot, too. It also greets, again, trying to balance and take advantage of what we have already, and I think those transitions made more sense to have that experience. Plus, the viewshed, to be honest with you, looking downriver is best on, is really best on that side, because the bend in the river further down really sets that up as a focal point, so it kind of all crafted itself down to the east side. And with the considerations on the west, you'll see, we try to owe a little bit that with that outlook and that overlook on the west side, so you still have downriver views or upriver views, but at the same time, we're not, you know, we're balancing what we had some constraints there. But, no, we didn't know that, but there was other, there are other things that crafted into our strategy.
Are there any other, okay, so you've listed the viewshed and the elevation, and then there's, I guess, negative infrastructure at the upstream end in terms of existing sewer main, and is there anything about the nature of the river or the flow of the river there that makes that sort of shore access at that end of the park less feasible than at the other end?
So, and obviously, we could get into the granite, there is a shoring area right in the middle of the park, right in front of the bulkhead is a little shallower than it is on the far upstream end and then on the downstream end. So, yeah, putting any in-water infrastructure didn't really obviously make sense there, because no one wants to add dredging to another maintenance item to the city. So, yeah, we were very judicious in which way it made sense to think. It's a little bit, the water depths, maybe the deepest part would be on the upstream side, and just based on the bathymetric survey that was taken, but it's fairly commensurate with what's happening on the east. And so we're trying to, again, we were trying to look at all these variations and what's been also programmed into the park as part of the overall master plan. So you did ask, another thing that was the vision is that the master plan has been done for the park, and so we also took that into consideration, too, and what's, which could happen in the future, too, so it's not to lose those opportunities either.
To a layperson, it seems intuitive that hardened infrastructure on the upstream side potentially has some protective effect on softer infrastructure on the downstream side. Maybe that's just a, you know, even looking at, looking from overhead would think that, but it may just simply-
Current-wise on the river, it's pretty, the cross-sections of the river are pretty balanced, other than the shore area, so when it's high flood event, it's going to be pretty much the same flow, which you'll see, it's actually the other side would have a variation because it's so wooded and so tree, there's where you kind of get a retardation of flow because of all the vegetation, right? Whereas the bulkhead side, it's a hardened edge, so it has a very, hate to be an engineer, low friction area, so there's a lot of, water can pass a lot faster in that corridor. So it doesn't make a difference from upstream to downstream in general in this area. Little water would be a different story.
Thank you.
Ms. Buckland?
Just some comments, first of all, I have been absolutely blown away by these designs and the ingenuity and imagination and creativity that went into them. One thing that is just particularly compelling about B is the way that you took the best of both worlds. You have that western end that keeps that sort of traditional bulkhead, for those who like that with the overlook, but then on the eastern side, boom, we've got wetlands, we've got terraces, we've got boardwalks. I am, as everyone knows, a huge fan of our Town Common, I run there, I go to the concerts, I do yoga there, I absolutely love our Town Common. I will say this about my beloved Town Common, that esplanade just is, just has no imagination to it. It is a sidewalk and a rail and a brick wall. And I think one, and you go there, and one of the things I think our city has missed is that you don't have the feeling of being at a river. You have a feeling of being, I don't know, in a hallway or something. And one of the things that is just really tremendous about that concept B is that it brings the river back to the Town Common, it will allow people to have that experience of being at a river. And in all the, you know, the great cities where a river runs through it, you have those places like that, where you're able to get down and have the river. Did somebody say Paris? You can be part of the river, and I think that's one thing that's been sorely missing, and I just am delighted, I'm overwhelmed to see, you know, wetlands and a boardwalk where you have that feeling of the river is now back part of our city, and we can be part of the river, and the river can be part of our city. So I thought that was just a tremendous vision and creativity that brought that to these plans, while still retaining at the western end, you know, that sort of traditional bulkhead, especially since there's a sewer main over there, and elevated, you want to look out from 15, 20 feet, you can do that, but then at the eastern end, wow, we've got the river.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mark. So as I said before, we are looking for action this evening to move forward on the project. We'd like to, you know, have council give us direction on a preferred concept, then the next steps would be to come back with task order two, which would be a full construction document permitting phase of the project to your June meeting.
Are you done for a motion? We need to know the consensus of the council about whether or not you want to go with option A or B. I would very strongly support option B. Do you like that, David?
I do. I thought it was the first time.
I do think it's, I think it's important to keep in mind, I mean, I like option B too, but we've had alternative, there are other opportunities that we have down at that end of the park to create a, you know, something, you know, that was, you know, infrastructure that was, that might be a public private partnership, that would be a, you know, some sort of park-like amenity that doesn't have to be operated by the city. I don't know that the scale of what's proposed there, to some extent, you know, would substantially reduce those opportunities.
Option B does not preclude development of that.
So that parcel remains, you're not talking about pulling the river far enough up into that parcel?
Actually, I think, actually, I think B would actually prepare the site even more for a future development.
Of what kind?
I don't think the development, I think that the development and the use of that lot is really not necessarily part of this discussion. This discussion is, do we want to move with option A or B, and both A and B preserve the developable lot?
Correct. That was my question.
I'm not sure when this part of the discussion comes up, or if it's appropriate now, but I think that- I think that we're really missing the boat if we, no pun intended, if we just go with 150 feet of dock space. I shared the survey and had overwhelming amount of feedback. Almost every comment that was made was, you know, please include boat docks, especially on mobile, you could barely tell boat docks were included. And then on top of that, you know, I just, we see a lot of traffic leave Greenville every day during the summer and spring and fall and go down to Washington and spend money and enjoy that community, when everybody was commenting saying, we would rather spend our money here and enjoy that here in Greenville. I saw the mayor share it, and a lot of the same feedback was on there. He's much more popular on social media than I am, so he got even more feedback. But I really think that 150 feet is missing the boat, so.
And where was that? That was the Plan B, though?
Both of them.
He was saying, he wants more, like 500, 700 feet.
Right, so what I hear from Councilmember Bell is, I hear from the bulk of the council, I haven't heard from Councilmember Robinson or Mayor Perton, but I hear some sort of coalescing around B with the idea that we need to look at the amount of boat docks that's available. And much of this, I'm going to just say, much of this is based on budget availability. Let's, we're, we're designing, we have funds for the design, we have to begin to develop a plan for paying for it that may take a series of options and funding options related to it. At this point, it's just, we're working on the design. But I hear coalescing around B, and I'm going to look at Councilmember Robinson.
You're looking at me? When I come later, I don't need to speak first, I need to speak last. I come later.
Could we, could we add the additional dock space later?
Yeah, these are, we're in the conceptual phase, so.
And so I, I don't want to, I don't want to over, I don't want to get out there and engineer, again, what I, what, I think we need enough information so we can move forward with Task Order Two, so the engineers can begin to design. And we're not going to be, we're not going to be, at this point, be able to answer every single question about it. But I do hear coalescing around Concept B with the idea of some additional expansion of the boat, of the boat facilities, boat docks.
Consensus on B?
And neither of those designs limit the ability to add dockage.
No, it really just becomes a focus where we want to look at water depth, right? I mean, so it's really a placement and key to that.
Yep.
But, no, they're both flexible in that, in that regard.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Councilmember Dan, what do you think?
B.
She came first and spoke first.
Okay.
So, yeah, that's, B seemed to be.
Yep. Okay. Well, that's what we needed. What we will do at this point is we'll take the Concept B, we'll work on another task order that will begin the design, and you will see that on your June fifth agenda.
All right.
Okay?
Thank you.
Great, thank you. So we have one more presentation. This is really for information purposes only. Don Optagon is going to give us, give us an update on the design for the Dream Park Community Building.
All right, good afternoon, Mayor Perton Glover, members of council. I just want to give a brief update on where we are with the Dream Park Community Building from a design perspective. Just as a reminder, the Dream Park Community Building was the old fire station building. It's approximately 5,500 square feet in size, located at 1700 Chestnut Street, adjacent to Dream Park, right beside our, our spray ground. It was built in the 1930s, and the city has not used this, Greenville Fire Rescue has not used it for 40 years, the location. So tonight, or this afternoon, I'm going to go over the floor plan. I'll, I'll zoom in on some of these areas here soon. But overall, the floor plan includes a lobby and office space to accommodate two employees, one full-time and one part-time. That full-time staff, we would look to move that employee from another location. Storage for facility table and chairs to be used for public events and rentals. Warming area with refrigerator sink and counter space and two restrooms and one family restroom. It sounds very similar to the Barnes E. R. Taff Building, which is located at Greenville Terrace, and our plan is to manage this, this facility, just like we do BET at Greenville Terrace. Here's a zoomed-in version of the lobby and office area. Again, it includes a lobby with a reception desk for staff. This will be staffed every time there's a rental or a program going on. Staff, well, office was situated in the corner there to provide a view of the park for increased supervision of the Dream Park and Spray Ground. There's a south-facing assembly hall, which I'll go over in a few minutes. Also, there's windows along southwest facade for public entryway, which would be the main entrance for the building. Has expanded assembly area with two overhead doors, which we'll review in a few minutes as well. So the area, the assembly area will accommodate 150 people. Again, this is very similar to BET at Greenville Terrace. We will host family occasions, celebrations that the, the city, the residents can rent the building for. Recreation and park staff will also organize youth and adults recreation enrichment programming to include but not limited to art and music classes, teen game nights, adult bingo and card games. It also provides staff to offer educational opportunities, which include wellness and health classes, plus we will utilize the building for staff trainings for summer camps and CPR. This is just another assembly area, potential furniture layout. Most of the furniture we have at the, at the center will be available for the public and provided by Recreation Park staff. However, if, if a resident needs other needs, they will be able to rent it out from a third party. This is the assembly area looking out towards Chestnut Street. So this will be looking from the warming, the kitchen warming area and the restroom area looking out. You see the two overhead doors there and the, the central entrance. This view is a south patio. The south patio is facing Chestnut Street. Again, it shows the overhead doors plus the, the middle entrance area. This is the current elevation view. This shows outlined in red what would be changing of that south patio. Also includes an additional sidewalk, which is also seen in red there. This is the north patio, which faces Myrtle Street, highlighted in red here also. This, this north patio will get two additional windows plus a new entryway, which will lead into the lobby area. And this is the elevation layout of the north patio. Again, these are all conceptual designs. Our next step is to confirm these designs with the HTR architecture and move forward with further, move forward to document, construction documents. Which brings me to our project timeline. So this fall, we, we hope to conclude the 95% design documents and then issue construction bids or advertise construction bids in December 2023. Construction will begin with all goes to plan, spring 2024, with a completion date of winter 2025, meaning that January, February date being finished with the spring opening 2025. And that's just a brief overview of where we are. Be glad to answer any questions.
I have a question. What does parking look like over there?
So the parking, based on the 150 combination for the assembly room, we would not have to add any parking. We are adding street parking. But the, there's two parking lots right there that will be improved, and those will be, be able to accommodate the size that we're posting.
Thank you.
Yep, yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am.
As far as staff, would staff be there, would there be a staff member there all the time or just when there are events?
So that's to be determined. Both times, they're going to be there, especially during events and also during rentals. So BET right now, if there's a rental there, we have a part-time staff that's on site because of the size and the service we provide for that building. But there will be full-time staff there who will be responsible for organizing the events that I mentioned.
Okay.
And programs.
Yeah, looks really nice.
Yes, ma'am.
How many square feet are we adding to it?
So it still remain, the foot, the footprint will still remain 5,500 square feet.
So they, are you going to have office spaces and all that?
So the office space, let me go back here. So the office space, let's see, so the assembly area will be approximately 1,800 square feet. So 1,800 at 5,500 square feet will be assembly area where families can use it. And then the rest of the building will be the office, electrical, mechanical, storage, warming kitchen and, and restrooms. So what the design team has done is taken the current floor plant, floor print, and created this design, which best fits what we want to use for the building for, also helps us with the supervision of Dream Park and make sure our staff there can keep out of the parking lot.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, sir.
Don, do we leave wire for like TV or any, if you want to show videos or something?
Yes, sir. Through design, yes, sir. Yep, through design, we'll have, for presentation purposes, we'll have a, still having quite fine tuned that yet, but there will be a couple of locations where TVs can be, can be installed, similar to what you see here in this room.
And how, how much, we don't have a whole lot of space at that building, particularly at the building, the park, that puts a lot of that space. Now how much space would be for, say, someone want to have a family cookout or something like that?
So if they want to have family. If they want to have a family cookout, they could, you know, probably accommodate about 150 people or less in the assembly room, but also they could, they could also use that, the park itself too, and the playground. So they could park, they could use the patio areas. The patio areas are not including the 5,500 square feet. So they could, they could use, and what, what residents do with BET, they open up the overhead doors and they kind of overflow the patio area, which accommodates more, more individuals.
And those overhead doors have worked really well.
At BET, they really have worked really well because they allow somebody to use both inside
and outside, right?
Yep, yes, ma'am. We get a lot of great feedback from them.
I like that concept. Okay, that, this presentation was just for information purposes. We'll move forward with the design. We'll hopefully bring a sign and indication, a construction contract to you. This is one of the projects that is funded with the ARPA dollars. So this project has to be under contract by the end of 2024 and be completed at the end of 2026.
Get ready for 2023?
Yesterday, and hit it right yesterday.
Mayor Perton, that's all we have for the workshop tonight. You can adjourn the meeting and everybody can take a break and we'll be back in a second.[1780.24]